We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. It is September 23rd, 6:30 PM. Let's go ahead and stand, the indication remains standing for pledge.
Father, we come to you. This is a public hearing. There's really nothing to do on that one.
So we can move on from there to number six. Citizen input. I've got one that's been turned in from Cecilia. It's not spelled out, so no matter what, you can go ahead.
It's just like a thousand different times. But I'm on the planning and zoning committee. And we went through a lot of procedures trying to get everything rezoned. And the area for on item 11, where he's wanting to sit in. That would be an industrial and require special permit and changes zoning. And our planning and zoning has denied him. We don't think that that's a good place to let you go. So we have allowed to turn that down. We just made the series of commercial growth instead of industrial growth.
Is that it?
Thank you.
All right, we're discussing action on closing the public hearing.
I'm gonna motion to close the public hearing.
All in favor with that?
Frank, please.
Greg, please.
Gibson.
Chris Burkett. She doesn't have a time breakdown for the special session.
Give her a second. The position in question remains vacant, not due to lack of necessity, but because of surrounding agencies offer significantly more competitive compensation. During budget discussions, he was informed multiple times that the city needed $200,000 from the overall budget. Now we see where those funds were redirected. This is not a compromise, it's directly to public safety. I'm fully aware this letter may provoke discomfort, but I will always stand for my department, officers, the city, and citizens of West Walken. We, as the police department, have consistently exceeded expectations and will continue to serve with pride and professionalism. But we will not remain silent, our needs are dismissed, and our contributions are redoubted. As for the departments receiving substantial raises, what tangible improvements have justified a 40% to 29% increase? You see tall grass, blockaded buildings still there, minimal cetaceans, same roads, the same issues year after year. Rewarding complacency while penalizing performance is not leadership. In my opinion, my opinion, it's mismanagement. So I respectfully urge the council to reconsider the elimination of the police position. Public safety should never be compromised. For political convenience or departmental favoritism, the citizens of West Walken need to earn better, and so do the officers who deserve them. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
Are there any other discussions? As far as the budget?
No. Did we talk about outsourcing? Outsourcing the comment?
No, but that's again something we can look at after the fact and amend anything for. As well as going back and looking at whether we can figure out how to add additional police officers.
Right? I have no more questions.
I know it's been challenging with the budget. You know, we had lots of challenges up front with Funview and trying to figure it all out. I know the last two meetings that we sat in here, we really pushed through it. We made some decisions some may not agree with, but I think we all stood together and did what we felt was best. Again, we can go in and make budget amendments at any time. I think we got a balanced budget. And if there are no other discussions on that, I'll take a motion to approve the budget.
That was just workshop. Which would be, so for image nine.
So you wanna go to 10 now?
The ordinance for it.
Okay, so discussion and our action on a action on ordinance 333-9-23-2025 for proposed budget 2025-2026 budget. If we get more discussion on it or action, so there's where we can approve it.
What's that on? Where's the ordinance?
That's number 10.
Is the ordinance approved this budget?
Where is it?
Does everybody have a copy of it?
Yes.
It's a standard ordinance editing.
Okay.
Our standard just states that we're doing it.
Is this approving the budget?
Was it the same number for the tax rate?
Actually.
It was different number.
So now we can move on for a motion to approve the budget.
I make a motion to approve the budget.
Is it the budget or the ordinance?
Ordinance for the budget.
Sorry, yes. Yeah, so we need a motion to approve the ordinance 333-9-23-2025 for the proposed 2025-2026 budget.
Let me say that again? Okay, I make a motion to approve the ordinance 333-9-23-2025 for the proposed 2025-2026 budget.
My second. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Judge Coven.
Ramsey, Lindsey. Chris Burkett. Curtis Flinkle.
James, sir.
Now we'll get back in order.
Yep. We're just gonna move up through, actually doing seven and eight, which is the tax rate.
I will move on to number seven. Discussion and our actions are approved of proposed tax rate of 0.331844.
I make a motion. I make a motion, we approve the tax rate of .331844, which is less than last year.
I got a motion, do I have a second? All in favor?
We should point out that that's two years in a row.
Two years in a row.
Two years in a row that council has been able to lower the tax rate.
A little bit, probably go up, the values go up.
It does, but I think it's.
Zero control on that one.
Judge Coven. Chris Burkett.
Greg Sprig.
Gibson.
All right, number eight on the agenda is discuss and our action on ordinance 334-9-23-2025 for the tax rate for 2025-2026 year. Maintenance and operation 0.299682. Debt service rate 0.032162. Total tax rate of 0.331844. Any discussion? If there's no discussion, I'll take a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve the ordinance 334-9-23-2025 for tax rate 25-26 year maintenance and operation, the debt services rate and total tax rate of .331844.
Got a motion? Got a second? All in favor?
Judge Coven.
Chris Burkett.
Greg Sprig.
James, sir.
Let's move it on. Number 11, discussion and our action on specific use permit on site plans. 140 West Highway 276, West Walken, Texas 75474. Legal description A 0418 Hassel. Zachariah Track 6-1. Acres .95, proposed ID 101884. Zone commercial C. The request is to approve a special use permit to place storage units on the property and approve the site plans.
How you doing?
Doing well, how are you?
Good.
Can I just go up and kind of get right into, like your name and? My name's Phil Penopoulos, I'm the landowner of this property and developer project as well. Appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak on this. And I'll start by addressing the P and Z committee. Non-recommendation to approve, the council. Both me and my entitlement attorney agreed that that Thursday, September 4th meeting was mishandled, according to the Best Rights of Development Chapter 25 of the Taxation of the Government Code, which ultimately led to that denial of the recommendation. Just to kind of breeze over this, I know I mentioned this last week, a couple weeks ago with city council. Some of those things that led to a non-recommendation was offsets and variances. They just looked too small. And the plan, these site plans that you have are up to code and even beyond. They were, you know, I know you guys require 25 appearance structures on that 28 to have some more room, among other things, on that site plan. Furthermore, there was some, there's a lot of questions regarding civil plans and proponents with that, such as drainage landscaping. It was a question that was up in the air. However, that shouldn't be addressed until, you know, the stage goes on to approve civil plans. It wasn't a discussion we had during the planning and zoning committee. And lastly, I think the biggest point too was the data showed that they had, or that the planning and zoning committee had, there wasn't enough demand for self-storage in the area. And I have, I still have the data that I can hand out to you guys as well. It's the same as last meeting. I think, you know, for the public and for us today, I think it might be pertinent to go over and if you have any questions regarding it, more than happy to answer them. I've got the site plans here too as well.
Have they changed at all?
No, sir.
Okay.
Everybody did get the email from Lee, everybody gets a chance to go over that. She kind of gave some more information on a specific use.
How many lots is it?
Lots.
Truly, it's one big lot.
One big lot. All commercial.
It was split. The front was commercial, the back was residential, and then you guys re-zoned the entire thing. And we need, yeah, a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, and so I'll get into the data too, one point I do want to mention for today. According to your quote, right, chapter 12, article 11, self-storage that this facility is, it does abide by like a commercial zoning. And retroactively, like Shannon just mentioned, you know, I re-zoned it for the commercial with the intensive building facility, and council did approve that. And so, just to friendly reminder as well, you know, unless there's specific clear negative impact on the environment, health, or welfare of the community, that is codified, arbitrary subjective views on whether it looks pretty or not, doesn't hold up against Texas law. Kind of moving forward though, why I'm here, why I chose self-storage in this area is really just a data-driven decision. I love data. Heard out on it. And so, this facility is 14,700 square foot. West Walken and the surrounding market has a total available rent per square foot of 126,000. And that's currently in the market. The population growth of West Walken itself has increased 15%. And that's over the last five years, 2020, 2025. If those numbers are off, please tell me, I know city council definitely knows those numbers. And so, if I were to put 14,700 square foot and add that to the 126,000 square foot existing, that's an increase of supply of 12%. Which shows hand in glove with the increase of population. And this whole thing is a retroactive review of the last five years. It does not include the next five years till 2030. Doesn't include the town homes that are gonna be built or the single-family homes that are gonna be built within city limits. So, overall, Walken is gonna need more than a 12% increase in square footage. Furthermore, I listed some comparables here of similar facilities. They are all built pre-1996. Two of them, Stormax, had expanded space in 2024. 11,400 square foot to meet this demand. When the self-storage also expanded in 2021 and in 2024 to meet this demand, it's been increasing. So kind of a little summary of the whole thing is a this is a facility that is solely retail based. It's not boat storage, it's not RV storage, it's not outdoor or commercial. It's for the residents here in West Walken. The comparable facilities show a true physical occupancy of 88%, which is shown in this data. In the industry, 85 is considered full, but that is, you know, price dependency. You don't want to be 100% full and undercharging. A little bit of nuance there, however, worth pointing out that 85 is quote-unquote considered full. And all of these, all these facilities are above 88%. As I mentioned, in five years' time, residents of West Walken and the surrounding communities are gonna be in a shortage of square foot, which, as I mentioned last meeting, self-storage is treated as a commodity. So very one-to-one ratio of supply versus demand reflects the price. So if we're at a low of supply, those prices are in a fast. What I'm doing here, this solves that problem for the community. Low-impact commercial use. Once it's leased up, we're looking at about one to three cars of traffic per day. This is a smaller side, smaller facility at 14,000 square foot, so it only demands one or two cars of traffic. It reduces no burdens on the public infrastructure, which includes health, safety, and welfare of everybody. Ultimately, project's gonna increase the tax basis. It does increase property homes, I can give you data on that as well. Rated facility, 2025 build. I know kind of the opinion around here is, and I, and you know, facilities are older. And I know that it can sway some people, but as I mentioned, brand-new build, 247 security, heated entry.
Is climate control?
No, sir, only non-climate. And just last statement summarizing, Eric, I'm happy to answer any questions. I know you have something to ask me. Respectfully ask council to consider the legal standards governing land use decisions and approve the specific use permit based on the merits of the application that I have here in compliance with all and distant codes and regulations found in chapter 12, article 11 of West Walken bill codes. The benefits that it will bring to the community in the absence of any legitimate ground is foretold in our, as we go right. Love to answer any questions.
So what's the, what's the sales tax associated with a storage building?
Whatever the, you mean per unit?
Yeah. What's that, what's sales tax do we garner from, from a sale, from a rental storage building?
I believe that's assessed based on the city's.
So you're saying, so what's your saying is that every one of these, would you say was 100 numbered units? They pay sales tax on, from a rental perspective?
Oh, no, sir, they sell these, so it's like.
So there's no, there's no sales tax?
No, but the tax base is increased, I guess.
That's property tax, completely different. Yes, yes. There's no sales tax?
Not to my, not to my knowledge.
I just have a hard time with, with 276 facing frontage and there being zero sales tax garnered from it. I feel like there, you know, the retail, that something in there that would have retail space, even if it was just retail in the front, you sold boxes and moving supplies, would at least generate some sales tax revenue, and you could have storage units behind it. You know, when, when the 150, 200 feet of frontage is storage buildings, there's three cars that go in and out of there, that's what you stated. It really doesn't do a lot for the city in a retail perspective or in a sales tax perspective. It may be a retail store of some kind or retail restaurant, whatever, would generate sales tax because you generate rental income, but the only thing we get is the property tax value of it going up, which is not always going to be true in the future on a, you know, on a storage building that, as, as you said, you know, they were all built prior to 96, the tier. You know, those are probably not appreciating in value anymore. They might be depreciating in value. Help us benefit the city, you know what I mean? Help us benefit the city with something other than, you know, a storage building on the front.
Sure. I'd first like to challenge purpose of city council. I'm sure that the residents didn't vote just to generate tax income. I'm sure, you know, they voted the purpose, you know, of the city council that's devolved from Texas state law isn't just a many sales tax or money grab the most that you can. But I figured it's important to put that out there. In terms of your question of whether the leases generate sales tax or not, I wouldn't rule it out, I'm not sure whether it is in this jurisdiction or not. But to your point on generating sales tax, there are ancillary forms of sales in self-storage business. One of them being boxes and moving carts and locks, all of which are a part of what this plan, I can give you that documentation if you need. I don't have it today, but that will be generating.
But is that, is this a, is this a attended location? Or are you gonna sell those boxes out of wherever you live?
It'll be sold out of its property. But it is not a manager occupied facility.
Okay.
Any other questions for him?
The fencing pipe, what about the fence?
Fence on the north and then all north side and then that little bit residential side. I believe I got either six or eight foot. Regardless, I'm looking at our panel privacy, it's through it. Fencing, and then the rest of the fence likely changed on the rest of the side.
On this 276 side?
What do you do for security, just so everybody can jump on there for breaking the building?
247 camera. Will be available for the tenants or the. Lighting as well and weather replacement is on towards the residents. In one certain way, there's covers where it just directs light towards facility rather than the homes. For security too, we're looking at licensed by tracking as well. So let's say jump, jump fence, there, you have an access code, do a log and every, do a log. On time, so you know, it'll be presented.
Any other questions? Everybody read the email from the city attorney? If there's no other questions, we can move on and for motion.
I make a motion to deny this request for special use permit.
I have a motion on the table to deny, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor of denying the request? Judge Coven.
Greg Sprig.
Gibson.
Chris Burkett. Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Per my point of view, or next steps, I should say, I need written documentation of the denial. It's just from all city council members who voted, and I'd like to request that. By this provided possible. Furthermore, I need notes and evidence of any forms that were formed between September 9th, which was last city council meeting, and today, September 23rd, public or private, that were held, including the mayor that resigned.
You'll need to come in and make that request in the city. Moving on from there, number 12. Discussion and our action on presentation regarding lift station. Request for council to approve adoption of lift station pending passing all plan reviews and inspections. 108 Kingsbridge, West Walken, Texas 75474. Legal description S2157 Bee Tree Investments. Aiden Loft. One, sorry guys, one acre. That's .428, property ID 101797. And 112 Kingsbridge, West Walken, 75474. Legal description S2157 Bee Tree Investments. Aiden Loft 2 acres, one property ID 238498.
Yeah, I got this one.
Go on, have his presentation.
So, y'all have the, you know, they're, you guys can present now.
Yes.
And he's got somebody on teams. Put him up to the big. It's not connected? And can you call him? Call the architect and where he can speak as well. And we tried to do teams and I think his computers have technical issues.
Let me make a statement. The video does not match what y'all are saying up there in the meeting. I'm watching it at home and it jumped. There's an area where I'm expecting to see council vote on mayor and that didn't happen, and it jumped right on. What's going on? Why does it not follow the agenda? It makes citizens think things are shady.
I'm understanding that at some point it did lose connection, but it is back up and running.
Yeah, that's, that's also excuse every time. It loses connection. I don't believe it. So, y'all, y'all are not going to vote to have a mayor?
No, ma'am. We're gonna let the citizens vote.
You're not gonna have a special election?
Yes, we are. Actually, it won't be a special election, we cannot have a special election. The next election will be next November for the mayor.
Next year?
Yes, ma'am.
So how are you gonna handle two departments?
We have to stay on agenda. We can talk about it after the meeting if you'd like.
I'm sorry?
Jonathan.
Yeah, he can, he can speak over the phone if you want to.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Play him on speaker so we go ahead and.
Bring him a little closer to the mic.
Putting near microphone, so.
Jonathan, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so I got you close to the microphone and council, all councils in here, so you can kind of present your ideas as well.
Questions you guys have, or I'm not sure you guys expect me to give you a breakdown?
Who's, who's that on the phone? All right, give us a second. Okay, they've got your plans now that they're looking at. So do you want to explain what your plan is as far as the lift station?
Give me a full breakdown on what you're planning. Jonathan?
Yes, sir, no problem. Okay, so recently, let me start from the beginning, I'll try to keep it brief. So, last, um. The city did a community study for the, uh. The city did a study for the, the man that the sewer line was. Going to, the additional demand, the sewer line required the main city sewer line and what that meant for it and how we could tie it with. We were given two options, which was drop the, the sewer line or additional. For good business to feed, I don't recall that information, or add a lift station. Mostly due to. Well, I think one could speak as far as why this option is preferred to the other one. He is. What we opted out for was for the lift station. The lift station consists of one main station. At the mouth of the community located near the map that the approach, the main entry to the community. On the north side of that approach, it would be a lift station. Would be five, by five space, five foot by five foot space would be needed for the lift station. We had to say a lift station would be with a hundred channels per minute capacity. That's only designed to meet the man that most of the time about half that. The man will be necessary. Line will consist of a six inch sewer line. Sloping up, that's what the lift station is for, sloping up from the lift station to the. Main sewer line we would tie into. That six inch sewer line that will come in the community will have. About three each of the house, each of the homes will be. Just to clean out of the four H line that would happen to that six inch, six inch main. That is the overall. Project in the general, in the summarize sense, if there's any questions.
Did everybody kind of grasp that or need explanation?
I, I didn't grasp it. Can you explain exactly what it is?
Explain what they think it was. Do you want to explain it?
When he's saying that the city didn't allow him, uh, they want to drop the sewer line down for him to get the spread they need. So the, the lift station is going to be set, so he wants to. For ten houses, ten houses on the, on that.
So the first time the city say you go down the, or the green bridge. So now the, another company is saying it's too expensive for down this, this pipe, you know? So the city say you need, need paying for this gap. I can pay for this gap. There's no green bridges on my property, you know? So it's got two options. Then before you get, or put in a station for the, all my houses, for all my lots over there. For me, it's more better putting a main station. But I can do every time service and the stations. Because I want to settle the property. I don't settle the houses. I don't want to pay over there for long time. So the city just take the approval or adopt the station in the street. It's okay for me to put in the main station and do about the gap and put in the station. This is my deal.
During, can I ask, I still understand the, so the, the line, the sewer line from there, is it higher than the city's line? Or is it lower?
Lower, it's lower. There's a slower.
There's is lower than the city's line, right?
Yeah, it's even more high, yeah.
So you need a lift station so you can pump into it.
Yeah, but he wants the city to adopt the lift station because the city is going to benefit from the property that are going to be sold there.
So.
He doesn't want to be responsible for the lift station.
If I understand correctly, they're going to buy the lift station and put it in and then we're going to adopt it as our lift station once it's. Put in, what, once it's put in, paid for and part of the development, then the city will then take ownership of the lift station and be responsible for, uh, preparing. Which is understandable because the houses will be sold and.
And what is there a certain brand that they put in and we decide what?
Yeah, they gotta meet, they gotta meet whatever, whatever specs Jacob and Martin and the city of West Walken.
And it'll have to back on.
Yeah.
I, I. As long as they. Well, sir. Wouldn't go ahead if you guys are ready, if you're understanding, we can go ahead and go with a motion on it.
I make a motion, we approve a contingent with them meeting the city of West Walken. Requirements and the Jacob and Martin requirements. And passing all inspections before we adopt.
All right. Got a first and a second?
Judge Goby.
Bradley Lindsay.
Chris Burkett.
Greg Sprinkle.
There you go.
I'm gonna pass you on over.
All right, we're gonna keep moving on. Number thirteen, discussion and our action on presentation regarding drainage. And city participation request, Roadrunner Drive, West Walken, Texas. Off of Rabbit Cove Road, legal description being A zero 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 three nine. Warredine John Track, P dash one B acre, fourteen point three six seven, property ID nine five three one.
So they gave us the KNS engineering documents that are associated. Oh, it's here, okay.
Yes. I'm gonna put a microphone over there by you just so we can.
I'll try to speak a little louder.
Thank you.
My name is Samir Strasta. I represent the client and I'm from KNS Engineering. And this property, we've been trying to develop since December of twenty twenty five, no, December of twenty twenty four. We tried to. Develop this property into twenty six lots. It's already laded and approved by the city. And it's already been recorded in the county. The problem with this land is it's very flat. So there's only one contour line within that fourteen acres. So you can say it's pretty flat as the floor. So there's a lot of plumbing issues that goes around and it's. It is like border by like three houses on three side and the Rabbit Cove Road on the, on the front. So as per discussing with the city, Shannon and city staff. We, we know that, that, that area has been, has some issues of flooding. And we have a little bit of issue. Trying to read out that water from the back neighbor. We have a little bit of issue with that. We have to get easement. We have to get all the survey. And it's been, it's been a little bit difficult to develop that land. Trying to read out the water going south. Of that, that property to. Uh, but we have to cross two property owner in order to have alternate, alternative method of draining that whole area. So we propose that we're gonna try to run a storm drain line all the way from Rabbit Cove going down. Red, Red Hawk Bay Drive all the way to the, the Lake Trivatory. And we had a meeting with the SRA. To acquire the easement and they, they previously approved it. That they're gonna give us an easement to drop. Build the line, provide the easement and discharge on the, the Trivatory on Lake Walk. On the south, south of that Red Hawk Bay. So since it's like such a big, it's going to help the city with the drainage on Rabbit Cove. And all the neighboring property owner. We just want to have a little bit of. Party, city participation to see if it's feasible. Because the owner is going to have a difficult time doing it by himself. There is about like almost four thousand liter feet of pipe. Going from the Rabbit Cove all the way to that outfall. And it's going to be pretty, pretty big size because of how much it's gonna collect on that from the Rabbit Cove and our development. Plus the adjacent. Property owner and the Red Hawk Bay, it's gonna collect all the water from there. And strong, go through the pipe and outfall it on the, on the lake itself.
Basically, you're asking for city participation. Have you put all the numbers together and what you're looking for?
It's, it's, it's such a hard thing to do unless like city approves it and then we can. We're gonna buy the, the way it's listed is we'll buy all the pipes and material needed for the construction. We just need to see this participation with installation help.
Participation with.
On installation.
On installation, yes.
Put in four thousand foot of pipe?
Yes, sir.
So again, I think we still need to see a proposed budget of what we're looking at there.
Yeah.
Are we asking for assistance? Are you asking the city to do all the digging and all that? We need to know what you're actually looking for.
Because until we go on a actual design, we would not know the size.
I don't, I don't think we can answer you until, until you tell us what we're, what you're asking us to contribute.
Yeah, we need to know what, what expense it's gonna cost the citizens in order for us to commit to it. So we need some kind of proposal put together.
Okay. Is that like, I'm just, I'm just brainstorming, brainstorming about because I'm just trying to see how feasible it is. Because I.
I think the city's willing to work with you. We just, we just gotta have some kind of. Some kind of idea of what you're asking us to work, to do with you. I don't see any problem. I think the city's always willing to work with any developer that's in the city. We just have to know what our commitment's gonna be because we just spent, you know, twenty hours working on a budget that. That now, you know, you're asking us if we can do something and I don't know that we have the manpower or the. Equipment to be able to do four thousand foot of storm drain with the other projects that we've already committed to.
Okay.
So what I would recommend. I make a motion, we table it and let you come back with that information. We can table this to the next meeting, giving you a chance to.
So what exactly, like, I'm just trying to, trying to. Uh, grasp it, how, what exactly, do you need a active figure of how much it's gonna cost because. Unless you get like from three, I know a certain amount after crossing certain amount.
Well, I, I don't think we need an amount as much as we need, okay, so here are the things that the developer's gonna be fitting to do and there's. Four thousand foot of pipe and we expect to be able to lay ten foot a day and it's gonna take four hundred days or whatever that time commitment is. You know, we need to know from, from, from the perspective of what's the, you know, the manpower requirement, what's the equipment requirement? You know, I, I would think that if you got a bid from a contractor, that would give you a, a breakdown of, you know, that, those charges. That then you could come back and say, we're gonna cover, we're gonna contribute this part of it. Can you contribute this part of it? And, and I think we'd look at it and go, we either can or can't.
Okay.
But I, I think we gotta know what that commitment is before we could even consider whether or not we. I think our willingness is a lot different than our ability.
Yeah, I, I, I hear you. That's what, that's, that's the first question probably my client is gonna have. Is what, what, what is the physical like possibility of, is being approved? Because he has to, you know.
Yeah, we want to help. It's just a matter of what we can and we can't do.
Yeah.
Financially wise or manpower wise, so. Or equipment wise, we just need a better layout of what you're actually expecting.
Let, let me ask you. I know we had, uh, last week, there was a discussion about laying eight inch pipe, right? With a, with a mayor, ex mayor, Mr. Ferguson and, uh, department. Is it like, is city of West Walken capable of laying forty eight inch pipe?
What size?
Forty.
Eight inch pipe.
This is gonna be very hard, like, it's gonna be only financial. It's not gonna be like, you know. Uh, contribution at that point, not just labor, you know, at that.
Yeah, so we absolutely gotta have numbers.
And the grain is gonna be a whole lot different than it is in a water line.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
They don't even have the equipment.
How deep is it gonna be?
I can't tell, James. It's, it, it's gonna be, it's gonna be shallow. Just. It might be four feet deep, five foot deep, depending on the size of the box. Or if it's forty inch pipe, it's gonna be at least six foot deep. At least two feet of cover over the pipe and. Four foot of pipe, so six foot deep at least.
Might be easier to talk, talk to the neighbors behind you again.
Yeah, I think they're not happy with, uh, the grain is, I could release the water somewhere.
Absolutely.
So that's, I think that's what the concern is and I've been trying to find a common ground for everybody to work, work that. Because I'm, I won't be able to resolve anybody's drainage issue on that. Because it's so flat. And the water has to go somewhere. If I push it to Rabbit Cove, Rabbit Cove is gonna be flooded. If I push it on the back, the, the neighbors not gonna be happy. So I'm just trying to find common ground for, I'm that, this is the best solution I can come with. Is trying to resolve everybody's issue with that pipe. But it has cost implication at that point.
Okay, so. I recommend you try to put something together. And we can sit down and look at it again. For right now, we're not gonna approve. We're gonna, we're just gonna table it and move on.
Okay, that sounds fair.
I make a motion, we table it into a future agenda item when he's prepared.
Second. Judge Goby.
Greg for Kent. Greg Sprinkle.
Yes, sir.
So number fourteen would be adjourned in a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, Judge John?
You got a motion? All in favor? Chris Burkett.
I'm very sprinkle.
We are adjourned.
Adjourned shit. Adjourned shit.